City Council to order for August 20th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson. Councilwoman Carson. Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Your button, sir? Is it flashing? Being finicky? I'll keep going. Councilman, Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Mackel Downey. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Mr. Benson, Councilwoman Carson, and Councilman Mackel Downey are not with us yet at this point. If they show up, I will make sure the record reflects when they showed up. And I need to get the council to give me their interests on having an executive session. Mr. Bullock.
I move to have an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) (B) for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning the intergovernmental agreement with Denver regarding Pinia Boulevard ramp and regarding the DIA intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second, ma'am.
Okay. We motion in a second to go into an executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We will be back out to start the regular portion of our meeting at 6:30.
They're from an area of our city, up in the northern area of our city. I'm glad to have you all here this evening. I would invite all of the folks in the audience to rise for the presentation of the colors. Would you guys like to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I believe that they have something to present to you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Coach Scott Pax, Article VII, out of Commerce City, Colorado, I'd like to present you this flag for you and us, the flag of the state of Colorado. Nothing has happened, nothing you do for us.
Absolutely, now I'd like to ask my council to come down and join me with these young men because the city gave the flag to the pack, so that they had a Colorado state flag, so that they could do these presentations, and I want to make sure that the council is recognized as well. Come on down, let's take a photo with these boys. Is this all the boys that are here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Great. Get up here by you guys, we'll take a picture. I want you to be in front. You need closer?
If you guys could get closer, that would be great.
You guys shoot flags, go right next to each other.
We know that they're not supposed to be that close together.
Dash will put your head out, thank you.
There you go. One, two. One, two, three. Perfect.
Flags first.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to these young men that are in the program and learning to be better citizens and to help the people in Commerce City and to help themselves. I did have the honor of going to Cherry Creek State Park and giving them the Colorado flag, which they didn't have, which Commerce City provided for them. And I also want to make sure that not only your group, but any Cub Scout group or Girl Scout group that wants to participate with Commerce City is welcome. Any night we have a council meeting, to come and provide us with the honor of presenting the colors at our council meeting. So thank you all for everything you're doing, for your part in the community. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
And I'll hang this little plaque in my office, so anytime you come by, you can see it. Thank you, everyone. Next item, I would like the staff to go ahead and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Pam Sprotler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Trudy Smith, Kemp Neighborhood Association.
Paul Solano.
Harvus Thomas.
Gene Lefle.
Joy Bishop.
Kristy Douglas.
Andreas Anderson.
Blaine Sherman.
Angel Anderson.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Darren Sterling, City Engineer.
Larry Woog, Police Department.
Chuck Sonier, Police Department.
Ralph Sibley, Police Department.
Dave Munoz, Police Department.
Chuck Baker, Police Department.
Ms. Rhym Cordell, Governmental Relations.
Bill Clayce.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Thank you, and welcome all who have attended this evening. First item on our agenda is going to be a... Before we get to the first item, I want to ask the council for a motion to allow Mr. McElton to be excused from tonight's meeting. Mr. Moreno?
Move to excuse Councilman McEltoni.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
A motion is second to excuse Mr. McEltoni from tonight's council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mr. McEltoni is excused. First item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recom... and Recognitions. And I have a proclamation here, if I could get Mr. Howard to step forward to the podium, please? I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Commerce City's Memorial Day Parade has been a staple of our community for 48 years, and whereas the parade would not be possible without the dedication of numerous city employees who volunteer their time and resources to ensure its success, and whereas Mr. John Howard, the city's Information Technology Director, has served as a volunteer for 34 years staging the parade entries, and whereas the parade grew from a 15-minute route in downtown Derby with 20 entries to a two-hour, 1.5-mile parade with over 150 entries during his tenure, and whereas with Mr. Howard's leadership, the event has become Colorado's largest Memorial Day Parade with more than 10,000 spectators annually, and whereas Mr. Howard is retiring this year from his volunteer position to again enjoy the Memorial Day holiday with his family. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council, I hereby honor John Howard for 34 years of dedication to Commerce City's annual Memorial Day Parade and helping to build a quality community for a lifetime. What are the council's desires? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the proclamation.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Proclamation is approved, and I'll come down and present it to Mr. Howard. And I first would like to tell you, over the years while I was an employee, I had the opportunity to work beside Mr. Howard at these parade functions and the volunteer efforts that he took over the last 34 years, the importance that has been to this community, to have employees who have that kind of dedication to go out on their own time and help to make this happen. I truly appreciate every year that you participated. Mr. Howard?
Thank you. I guess the first thing I'd like to say, it's kind of a clarification. 34 years ago, it wasn't really volunteering. I was the new guy. So, didn't have a lot of choice in year one. Truly, this has been, it's a team effort. Every department in the city participates in this. I had really a kind of a small part, when you look at everything else that was done. Public Works, Parks and Rec, Police Department, everybody comes together for the parade. The Parade Committee, worked with them for years, it's an outstanding group, and are the ones that really make it happen. This year, we added something new where we had more citizen input, and once again, we had members of city council that worked with us directly, so I'd like to thank Councilman Moreno and Councilwoman Elliott for working with us this year. You can't believe how much that helps. So, I hope that continues. It's a tremendous benefit. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to do this. It's a lot of work, but every year, you get a lot of pride and a lot of joy out of doing this, so... And there's great things to come, I'm sure, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be citizen communication. Please remember that you have a three-minute opportunity, and when I call your name and you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. First, I'll call Trudy Smith.
Trudy Smith, 7142 Pontiac Street, Commerce City. I wanted to come and let you know that Kemp Neighborhood Association is having music in the park again this year, this is the second year. And this year, we've snagged what we found out is a Commerce City-based band called Colorado Storm. They don't play here much because we don't have much venue here, but they play country western, and when asked, they said, oh yes, we do all sorts of music. And we wanted to invite you all and everyone in the audience to come and enjoy it with us, it's free of charge, just bring your picnic lunch in your chair and plan on having a really good time. We even think we're going to do a little dancing on the asphalt. And it's this Thursday, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So here are the flyers I have left, I don't know if I have enough for you, probably not.
We can share. We can share.
Great. So then the other thing is, I was in a conversation today, and a question came up about the little tax slash surcharge that we have on our Commerce City downtown King Supers grocery store. The last time I was there, it was three cents on $6.70 purchase, and I know that that store's been in existence a really long time. I was told originally that that charge was about paving the parking lot, but I never really heard an official version of what that is, where it goes, and when it will be not there.
It was for infrastructure, I don't know when that expires. I would ask Mr. Tanklandberg if he would like to address it. Do you know where we're at with that? It was for public improvements, was it not?
Yes, sir. It's a fee that was put in place by agreement with the developer and pays for public improvements. As I recall, it has about another 20 years to go.
Okay. And that's for more than just parking lot, that was for water and sewer infrastructure, all kinds of things, correct?
There were a number of public improvements made there, yes.
And the amount of that is one-half of 1%, is that correct?
Is that correct, Mr. Tanklandberg? Yes.
Thank you very much.
One-half of 1%, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Douglas?
What's the total amount, as far as collection?
Do you know what the total of that is and what we're collecting?
I don't recall the amount offhand, but I know it is limited by an upper threshold of amount of money that they invested that they're to be reimbursed, and it's also limited by the time. So if time runs out before they're reimbursed the full amount that they spend, then that's it, they don't get any more.
Great.
But we can get you that number, I just don't recall it off the top of my head.
And there are several different type of taxing opportunities or recovery-type opportunities for public infrastructure. I know one was used on Walmart when it went in, and that was, we got to retain the tax until the public improvements were paid off. We got to retain all of the... their tax, correct?
After, yeah, once they made their improvements...
Right, once they made their improvements, we let them keep the tax to make the improvements, and then we got it, but it only took a couple of years, at the rate they were going.
Right. The difference between what was in place on Walmart and this, this is actually a public improvement fee that is imposed similar to the sales tax.
Correct.
However, once it expires, then it does not come to the city. It just goes to reimburse for those public improvements that the developer made.
Right. Okay, thank you, I just wanted everybody else to understand it a little better.
Sure.
Any other questions before we move on with what was brought before us by Ms. Smith? No? Okay. Next person is Paul Solano.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Paul Solano, 6751 East 60th Avenue. I wanted to take this moment to accommodate the council on the great job you did on amending the land development code to address the fracking issue. I'm a candidate for RTD Board of Directors, District K, and in my petitioning to get on the ballot, I did talk to a lot of citizens that really had a lot of good things to say about this council. And one other issue that they were real concerned about is the transportation needs of Adams County and how Adams County's been left out of the bargaining table, and, well, it's obvious that yesterday's paper in the front pages, they talked about the North Corridor, how Adams County's pretty much been left out. But anyway, I just wanted to take this moment to accommodate council, mayor, great job.
Thank you, thank you. And you know, I'd like to say, good luck with your endeavors for the K seat on RTD. We've talked quite a bit with RTD. We are frustrated, as well as many of the other communities in the Northeast, that a lot of our portion has went south, and we've got pushed back on getting the improvements for the fast tracks to come into our area. However, what we have been asking for, and what I asked your predecessor for, is to, at least with the monies that you have, help us to increase our RTD service in our community and increase the stop opportunities and the turnaround opportunities so that our residents have the transportation needs necessary. So I will further be talking to you about that if you get elected to RTD.
I appreciate that, and in the event, and hopefully I will, I will very much so take the concerns of Commerce City. I was born and raised in Commerce City, my heart's in Commerce City, but have a good evening.
Great, thank you for coming in. Next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes of August 6th. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the minutes of August 6, 2012?
Mr. Teeter? A motion is second to approve the minutes for August 6th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. On the consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda, this is council. Any council member have any concerns with either one of these items so that we can remove it and have further discussion? Mr. Moreno?
I actually have a question about both items on the consent agenda.
Do you want to pull them from the consent agenda?
I will so move.
Okay. Is there a second to remove these items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we don't need to vote. It just takes the member indicating that they're desired to do that.
They are removed. Let's take each item individually, then. First item will be Resolution twenty-twelve dash fifty-five, approving City of Lone Tree request for affiliate membership on the E four seventy authority. What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
I'll wait for that question.
Wait for discussion? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand twelve dash fifty-five?
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Benson?
Second to motion.
I have a motion is second to approve Resolution two thousand and twelve dash fifty-five. We'll go to discussion. Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, just a question for staff. It says in the resolution that Lone Tree is petitioning to join the E four seventy board as an affiliate member so they won't have voting rights. Are they, though, is there a financial contribution that Lone Tree will be committing?
I'll address that, and perhaps Councilman Benson wants to add to this, since he's the council representative. There is a membership fee for joining, and that's twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And Lone Tree will be paying that. Lone Tree was not incorporated when E four seventy originally was organized. And for that reason, obviously, they were not eligible to be members when the organization was first put into existence. And the organization has been operating for some period of time. And, of course, the fees have been paid for that membership. And now, if Lone Tree becomes a member, they're agreeing to become a member without vote. That's the significance of being affiliate. And they're satisfied with that, with just paying the initial affiliate membership fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Well, I agree with what Bob said. The twelve-five is half of the normal membership fee. In other words, there's eight, five cities and three counties. And all of us had to pay twenty-five thousand, but for the affiliate members, it's half of that. And the other affiliate members are like RTD, Dr. Cog, Northwest Parkway, I think even Well County, although that person hardly ever shows up. But they don't, they're just ex-officio members, you might say, and they have no vote. The only eight people who can vote are the representatives of the five cities and three counties. They can talk and discuss any matter that comes up before the board, but that's what they want to do. They recently annexed a portion of property that's immediately adjacent to E four seventy. And so, this caused them to be a little more interested in it. And the five cities right now are Parker, Aurora, Commerce City, Brighton, and... Gosh, I can't remember. Brighton, Commerce, Aurora. Did I say Aurora? Thornton, right.
Thanks for that clarification.
Sorry. I don't know that there are any other cities that are affiliate members. But now that they've annexed in there, they wanted to have a place on the board. And the board voted unanimously to do that with the consent of the governing bodies of the members of the board, the voting members of the board. So, that's why we're taking a vote on this.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we can handle this with a voice vote, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the...
Excuse me, I believe the city attorney needs to read the title.
Mr. Attorney, read the title.
Title of the resolution? Resolution two twelve, two thousand twelve dash fifty-five, Resolution approving City of Lone Tree request for affiliate membership in E four seventy Public Highway Authority.
Thank you. Next item is going to be Resolution two thousand and twelve dash sixty-three. What are the council's desires? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand twelve dash sixty-three?
Okay. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution two thousand and twelve dash sixty-three on second reading? What are, any discussion? Mr. Moreno?
On this resolution, I just want to make sure that the actual language for the ballot is grammatically correct. There was one sentence here. I'm looking at the fourth sentence, well, right after Commerce City Colorado, giving Public Service Company of Colorado the non-exclusive right to make reasonable use of city streets. Of city streets.
That has been corrected. It just wasn't corrected for the agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Attorney, will you read the title? Title reads, "Resolution..." Steve, did you have something? Because he's not up here. Hit your button there, Steve. Make sure it comes up. Alright, you're good. Mr. Douglas?
Sorry about that. When this comes up, as far as explaining this in the little booklet everybody gets, is it going more into depth or just as it is here for question one and two? That's just going to be in the book. Will it expand more as far as showing that if this vote doesn't go through, that what Commerce City will lose out financially?
I'm going to let Mr. Gaylor handle the legal part of it, but once it's on the ballot, I believe that the city is very limited as to what they can, information that can be provided. And I believe that since this was a public service, this was Excel Energies, this is being done at Excel Energies' request. I would be, I would imagine that they would be doing some kind of informational, they'll be providing some information to the public, but I believe this is being done at their request.
The city clerk is correct in that the city is limited to campaign for a ballot issue, as you well know. So, the city's role in putting out campaign information is limited, except we can put out information for purposes of informing the public, but we can't campaign either for or against a particular ballot issue. But Laura's also correct in that I would anticipate that Public Service Company will be putting out information for the public to be better informed about this particular issue. Frankly, it should not be contentious. I would not anticipate opposition because it's to everyone's benefit to have a franchise agreement. Because what it amounts to is that the franchise allows Public Service Company to use city rights of way and streets in payment of a fee to the city for that right to use. And the city has had a franchise with Public Service Company for a lot of years.
Right.
And it certainly would be to everyone's interest to have this franchise approved.
Yes, that's right. Alright, thank you.
What else? Mr. Attorney, will you read the title, please?
Title reads, "Resolution Setting Ballot Language For A Special Election To Be Held In Conjunction With The November two thousand twelve Coordinated Election."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is our public hearing portion. We have ordinance Z nine zero-two dash twelve and CU-nine-eight dash twelve, which are being requested to be held over until, or continued until, September seventeenth. What are the council's desires? Mr. Bullock?
Move to continue Z nine oh-two dash twelve and CU-ninety-eight dash twelve to September seventeenth?
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second by Councilwoman Elliott. I'm not used to saying her name because she never talks. It's kind of nice.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, that that motion should include time six-thirty PM, September seventeen, two thousand twelve.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes, sir.
And the second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to carry this over to September seventeenth. Mr. Moreno, do you have some discussion?
Yes. Is this being done at the request of the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It is held over until September seventeenth. Next item, resolutions. We have Resolution two thousand and twelve dash fifty-seven. What are the council's desires? Mr. Moreno? Okay.
I got it.
Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand twelve dash fifty-seven?
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilwoman Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-twelve dash fifty-seven. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moreno?
Could we get just a brief staff overview of this particular item?
I was part of that discussion with Murray Farms when this item was discussed with this Director of Finance, Roger Tinklenberg, and I. The matter was brought before City Council in a study session to advise you that this matter was pending and the request had been made. The reason why this is being handled as an incentive agreement is to avoid having to amend the Commerce City Sales and Use Tax Code to address taxation of agricultural activities in the city. As it happens, that this particular farm is owned by Murray Farms, and the tax code imposes a sales and use tax, as well as a franchise fee on their operation. And in line with, I believe it was Councilwoman Carson's discussion at an earlier date on another issue, but also involving agriculture, this is sort of a carryover then of that discussion in order to give some special consideration to the farming industry, and very limited farming industry in the city of Commerce City. And this incentive agreement goes in that direction to provide that benefit so that the agricultural activities of Murray Farms as an agricultural-going business in the city are not impacted by our sales and use tax. And that's really the synopsis and the basis for this agreement. Now, I can get into the details of the agreement if you wish, but that's the reason for the agreement.
Go ahead.
Is this incentive agreement, is it available to other agricultural uses in the city? Other agricultural producers?
If we had another agricultural producer that came forward and requested some type of consideration, then an incentive agreement is handled on a case-by-case basis. And all factors involved in that application would then be considered. And if staff felt it was appropriate, we'd certainly give that due consideration and bring it before council with an incentive agreement likewise. The issue is, is that under the tax code, individual companies that are individuals who are responsible for paying the taxes are treated equally, uniformly. That's an underlying rule of administering that tax code. And so, if an agricultural business similarly situated as Murray Farms came forward with an application, it would certainly be brought for due consideration by the city.
Does the property have to be zoned agricultural to be eligible for the incentive?
It would have to be a legal, a legal operation with proper zoning to engage in agricultural activities in the city, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be a factor that would be taken into account in deciding whether or not an incentive agreement should be approved.
Okay.
Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to say a few words for the audience. So, if they don't know, Murray's Farm was a forced annexation. I don't remember what year that took place.
Yes, it was. It was in conjunction with that unilateral annexation.
Right.
I believe two thousand eight, that annexation took place, and they were part of that annexation into the city.
Correct. So, I am glad to see this. It is, in my understanding, our only working farm in Commerce City, and I would like to continue seeing it there. Food is very important, and farmers have a difficult time sometimes. And then, for the audience, this agreement is only in effect as long as Murray Farms is a functioning?
Right. As long as they're functioning, and as long as the present operators have, are the operators for that operation. Now, if in the future, there are assessors for that operation, then they'd have a right to come in and apply for a similar type of incentive agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'd like to add on to that a little bit. Number one, Murray Farms is the only farm in Commerce City, at least, that has offices in Commerce City. There are other commercial farmers that come in and farm wheat, like up along Tower Road and stuff. Problem is, is their offices aren't here. Makes it extremely tough for the city tax assessors to go and recover those taxes. After looking into it, Brighton, Fort Lupton, Adams County, none of those impose a tax on farmers. So, it would make Mr. Murray's time to be able to compete very tough with the rest of the farming industry in the area because he would be paying taxes on his fertilizers, his seeds, all of the different things that go into farming. And for him to be able to have a competitive business located where he is as the only farmer in Commerce City, this makes him competitive where otherwise, it was a detriment to his company. That's why we're moving forward with this. Seeing no other discussion, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution two thousand twelve dash fifty-seven, Resolution Approving Business Incentive Agreement For Murray Farms, Inc."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, Resolution twenty-twelve dash sixty-two. What are the council's desires? Mr. Teeter?
Move to approve Resolution twenty-twelve dash sixty-one?
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second to motion.
A motion and a second. Is there anyone on this council would like to ask staff any questions regarding the resolution? Mr. Moreno? Is that from before? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. Well, Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Approving Amendment To Intergovernmental Agreement Between Adams County, Colorado And The City Of Commerce City Regarding The City's Two Thousand Twelve Payment Rehabilitation Plan For Seventy-Second Avenue."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, Resolution two thousand and twelve dash sixty-two. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution two thousand twelve dash sixty-two?
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Moreno?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any questions of the council? Is there any questions of the council to the staff on this particular resolution? Mr. Moreno?
I just had a question. The resolution only specifies that it, that the grants requested for Fairfax renovations. Is there a specific project in mind for this grant?
Yes, the particular grant, if we were to receive it, would fund those items in the latter phase of the project, which would be the handball courts, the picnic shelters, and a portion of the court areas. Again, it all, it just depends on what our bids come back at. We're not, we haven't sent the project out to bid. We don't know exactly what costs are going to be yet, so would, it could fund two things, it could fund four things, depending upon where our bids come in. At any rate, it would reduce the city's contribution out of our dedicated funding source that could then be put back into, you know, the pot essentially to be reallocated next year. So it would be used in entirety.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Attorney, you want to read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Two Thousand and Twelve Dash Sixty-Two. Resolution in Support of Application for Great Outdoors Colorado Local Parks and Outdoor Recreation Grant."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is our ordinances on first reading. Ordinance nineteen twenty-six. What are the council's desires? Mr. Moreno?
Uh, move to introduce ordinance nineteen twenty-six. Council is seated.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance nineteen twenty-six. Does the council have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only regarding ordinance nineteen twenty-six? Your hand up back there? Christie, is your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought your hand was up. I'm half-blind without my glasses anyway. Yeah, so if there's anybody out there, raise your hand, please. Seeing no one, I have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Ordinance Nineteen Twenty-Six. An Ordinance Amending the Two Thousand and Twelve Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Department of Justice JAG Burn Grant Funds in the Amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars for Technology Enhancements to be used by the Police Department Personnel and Authorization of the Expenditure thereof."
Thank you, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record reflect that the vote is unanimous, eight to zero, with one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is presentations. First presentation of this evening will be the two thousand and thirteen budget presentation from the Police Department. Mr. McBrough?
Mr. Mayor, before Acting Chief Sonier presents the Police Department budget, just wanted to provide a brief introduction to tonight's budget presentations. Once again, the budget presentations that you're going to see tonight are overview presentations intended to better prepare council for the budget workshop, which is scheduled for next Monday evening. Once again, the department budgets and the entire budget book that you're going to see later this week, the budgets were, were designed and prepared by staff to accomplish what we understand to be three primary goals from council. One is, continue to maintain current levels of services. Secondly, where possible, continue to maintain the current infrastructure that the city has. And the third is to look after the city's current workforce. So the budgets that you'll hear about tonight, like the budgets that you've heard in prior meetings, are intended to accomplish those three goals, because that's our understanding that, as to what council's direction has been going into this, to this budget season. So you'll see two final presentations tonight, first the Police Department budget, then the capital improvements budget, and then our final presentation tonight is what we're calling kind of a wrap-up presentation to summarize information that you've presented, that you've been presented so far. Highlight the areas that we believe council needs to discuss next week, and most importantly, to see if there is additional information City Council would like us to provide in advance of the workshop next Monday night. So unless you have any questions, I'll invite Acting Chief Sonier to proceed with the first presentation.
No, I'm ready.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to welcome my command staff that is here tonight. Commander Baker, Commander Munoz, Commander Sibley, and Commander Woog. They're here to answer any detailed questions you may have about the budget. Thought it was important they'd be here for this. Pretty straightforward. The mission statement of the Commerce City Police Department is to establish and maintain an ongoing community partnership. We're committed to enhancing the quality of life for all of our people in our city. We will fill this, this mission with courtesy, integrity, quality, and service. Currently, our department, as you're aware, we're currently in the middle of a reorganization. We're streamlining all of our business processes. We're trying to find very line of sight, so it doesn't take three weeks, three months to get a decision. It should be very clear. We're focusing on the entire department, including the Office of the Chief, commanders, lieutenants, sergeants, officers, on what is the scope of authority, what your expectations are, and accountability, that everybody's held accountable. And overall, we're looking at employee wellness. And that'll get more, we get into the last slide, well, the second-to-last slide, we'll talk about that. Our current organizational chart, it shows the Office of Chief of Police. These are all my direct reports. Now, each one of these have their own organizational charts below them. You've got Support Services Commander, which runs investigations and internal affairs. Get the Special Operations Commander that runs the stadium operations, the school resource program, you name it, Dave Traffic, everything else he can put underneath them. Then the North Area Commander, Commander Sibley, South Area Commander, Commander Woog, and they also oversee the patrol teams, the Platoon A and the Platoon B, and our records division, our own information technology, and victim services. Now, one thing I wanted to make note of, and that, just for the council presentation, is we've all kind of heard about major crimes, and depends on how you read. Perfect timing for crime talk. I would notice that majority of our major crimes are down. Now granted, our homicide rate is up. That's one thing we're looking at, and we'll continue to look at. But I just wanted to look at the numbers. Projected, we're looking at numbers to be down for two thousand and thirteen. Overall, homicides are up, though. Now, in our budget, we had a couple significant line item variances. The first one is, there are only bids. It's the state bid on vendor increase for range supplies. It's up nineteen hundred dollars, which is about a six percent increase. The replacement ammunition that we need to, to make sure that all officers qualify is up two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Now, the one range fee, and remind everybody, go back a couple years, we were going to go to the Flat Rock facility, so we pulled six thousand dollars off the two thousand and twelve budget, what we used to pay for the range fee. Since we're not going to be going to that facility, we're having to put it back into the budget. That's why it wasn't there in two thousand and twelve. It was there in two thousand and eleven, but it'll be there in two thousand and thirteen for use of the range. That's the firing range. Background investigations, this is just a typical cost going up. It's a hundred and fifty dollars, we're going up in our background investigations. We do contract these out, because it's cheaper for us, and we get them done more timely. Adcom, as for every year, it tends, it will go up and down this year. It's going up twenty-four thousand dollars, which is a four percent increase. Our substation went up fourteen hundred dollars, and with every other budget presentation you've seen, we've all seen the credit card fees increase, and ours is up two hundred dollars. Of course, the Animal Control Center has gone up another eleven thousand dollars. We continue to see they go up this every year. We pay per animal we take in there, and I want to say it was up to a hundred dollars an animal now? Is that what it was, Commander? It's like a hundred dollars per animal we take to the facility, is what it costs us. And that's how we get billed on per animal. This canine vacation and boarding care, this is for our personal canines, the officers that have the canine dogs. They're specialized dogs, you just can't leave them in any one place. This is just an inflation increase. Prisoner expenses, contractual increase, we did switch vendors this year. It's three thousand dollars more, but it's still a lot cheaper than paying an officer overtime to transport prisoners back and forth for court. Membership and dues, we've reduced. Capital outlay equipment is down seventy-three thousand. Now, I'll remind council that last year, that was that money allocated for the AFIS fingerprint machine, and then the Kali accreditation. So we're down fifty-four percent there. We've got some budget enhancements. We're looking for fifteen thousand dollars for TASER training and supplies. We have sixteen TASERS that are out of production, no longer in service, and sixteen other TASERS that are over the lifecycle. Now, the TASER are an important piece of equipment to the officers that are out there day-to-day. This keeps us from getting to go hands-on with your combative drunks and those type people, and reduces our injuries. We've got to get that TASER program back up and running. And, of course, in the city, one of our number one complaints is what? Traffic. So we've increased the amount of, you know, grants, everything else, the technology grant we just talked about, getting those radar units, more of them out there. So we're putting money into the budget to do maintenance on those, rather than waiting down the road and having to replace them. We'll pay a little bit now, we'll be able to keep those for a longer time. Also, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we're getting eleven new vehicles. Part of that, the outbuild is for the, the stands and everything that goes inside the equipment inside those cars we need to have. The other one is, we've, we've seen in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, a hundred and fifty-eight and a hundred and fifty percent increase in the language line. For those that don't know what the language line is, it's a number that we can call, no matter what language it is, we say we need someone that speaks Spanish, or Russian, or whatever it is, they will send us to somebody that can translate, we can actually use the phone and translate to whoever we're talking with. We've seen that go up, and it's gone up every year. The next one we've seen is the, in the increase of what Accurate is, this is an investigative tool. Accurate is one of those programs that just tracks everything. You fill in an application, you fill out your Walmart card, all that information's tracked. You fill in an application, that's where all that information goes, and we use that for an investigative purpose. With, we've seen with the Centric server we talked about earlier in the year, putting the internet back in the car, we anticipate that this is going to go up. The usage of this program will go up, but it's only to help us in quicker apprehension of suspects. So total twenty-three thousand. Now down just to the, the bare minimum, you know, personal services are up seventy-three thousand, which is our, of course, our contractual raises that came. Material supplies are down seventeen thousand. Our service and charges are up twenty-three thousand. Our capital outlay, of course, is down seventy-three thousand, and we're showing a total budget increase of this year of point zero four percent. So not a real big, large jump. And one thing I would talk about is the two thousand and eleven staffing analysis, and I think this is important as we prepare for the budget talks. One of the things we look for when we're doing calls is we're looking, okay, we have calls for service. That's, that's the phone call in, the nine-one-one call. That's stuff we, we know we're going to have. Then we had our admin time, that's vacation, that's training time, that's all the stuff the officers have to do. So we're looking for a fifty-fifty split. We'd like to see fifty percent of our time is dedicated to community policing, or what we call bold patrol. And just a little bit on bold patrols, what that is, is it's, it's purposeful active patrolling, not just going out and, go out and write me four tickets. That's great, I can drive up and down Hundred and Fourth and give you four tickets, but that's not where our problem is. We need to make sure we're doing purposeful, actual patrol, and we like to see a dedicated fifty percent time towards that. You know, we've been using the same methodology since two thousand and six. It's based off from our calls for service. You know, it's our total obligated time that we have to do. It's, you, our officers are responding to you. We're still looking at that fifty percent. But it does include our sergeants, our traffic units, special investigative units, our community policing groups, school resource, it doesn't include those folks. And I had to ask Ross what all the numbers went, because he's, he's the one that put together the numbers. But basically, what our recommended staff rating is, is forty-nine patrol officers in patrol. Now, it doesn't include detectives or anybody else. It's calling for forty-nine officers in patrol. And currently, we're at forty-five. Now, I will say, I think we're closer to that fifty percent mark, because we do have the assistance of the traffic unit, the school resource officers, those other specialized units that aren't part of patrol, but they do add to it. So we're still right about that fifty percent. However, with that being said, one of the things we talked about with employee wellness is you're seeing the recommended staffing study of forty-nine officers. Our allocated staffing is forty-five. This is just patrol now, not the entire department, and our actual patrol. And you can see where those numbers, that top one, were, you know, like in January, we were down to thirty-six officers in patrol. That's nine officers off the street, or, you know, they're talking another thirteen officers that, they're saying really where we should be. And what that is, is that's people not actually, they're, they're on payroll, but they're not actually doing their job. It's either light duty, FMLA, in-training, like the new officers, or vacated positions. So on an average, we've been about seventeen percent down in that area, and we've had to make some adjustments inside the department to make sure we meet those patrol staffing needs. Okay? With that, any questions?
Does the council have any questions for the chief at this time? Mr. Bullock, did you have something?
Oh, no, that was from.
Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a question. I had seen in that, the major crime report?
Yes.
Shoplifting is up by a hundred percent. Is that something we're seeing throughout the nation because of the economy, or is that?
You know, you know, shoplifting is up, but one of the things you're going to find with the release for it, of the, number one call for service anyway, I'll get back to it in a second, is anytime you add big-box retail, you're going to see shoplifting go up. When we added, of course, Walmart, it went way up. King Super's going to add to that a little bit, so we can anticipate that it's going to be an increase in those areas.
So every time we add something?
Yes.
Of that type to our city, then that, that number's, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and, and it does have, and I will admit, it does have to do with the economy. Times get bad, thefts go up.
Thank you. Looks like you guys are doing a, a good job out there.
Mr. Moreno?
Thanks, Chief, for your presentation. I had somewhat expected to see maybe a, an ask for an increase based on how many resources went into the, to the landfill search for the infant. Were you able to take care of that within your existing budget, or?
Well, we are, we're coming back for reappropriations for that.
Okay.
We, we're currently putting those numbers together, and last I ever heard, we should have those numbers sometime next, next coming week.
Thank you.
With the total buyout.
Mr. Teeter?
Thanks for the presentation, Chief. I was just curious about, are we still paying, or is it on here, where's that, where the bed location for the Sheriff's Department for taking our prisoners?
Yes, we are still paying that, and that is, that is actually coming as a court budget.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Now, let me go to the rest of everybody first. Mr. Douglas?
Hey, thanks for your presentation, Chuck. Hey, I don't see anything up here about drug busting or anything, any? What would that be under?
That would be under other crimes, and I can sure get you that information.
Okay.
We'll put that together, and we'll have it for you.
All right, and has there, um, um, do we usually have an, an audit of the, the guns we take in as far as they count for?
Yes, we do, we do an audit of the guns we take in, and we have a process of where we either destroy them, or they're traded out for range supplies.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
One more question, Chief. The question that Councilman Teeter brought up about the prisoner issue with Adams County that comes out of the court budget, but how does the three thousand dollar increase in the prisoner expenses, how does that differ from that?
Sure, what that is, that's actually the transport. That's bringing the prisoner from the courts to see the judge here if it's not a video arraignment. Or transporting, you know, if they pick him up in Denver, and we've got to transport him to Adams County, they can do that transport.
Thank you.
That's what that increases.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Chief. First of all, where are things with this Rock Creek facility, and is this something that we want to continue to be a part of? Where has it gone? Where's, where are we at with that?
They are still moving forward with it, but what they've asked us for is they're looking at just using a pay-as-you-go, or basically pay, instead of being part member of it, we're going to have to pay as we go. We'll have to pay a range fee instead of being part of it.
And it's still online, still supposed to be moving forward? When it's going to open? When will you guys be in that facility to be able to utilize it for training?
According to the sheriff, they were breaking ground in July, and it should be opened, and I want to say it was October, but I'll not pause about that, Mayor.
Okay.
But they are moving forward with it.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, do we have all of our dues paid up for accreditation? We accredited with the state chiefs of police?
No, we're still in the process of finishing with our accreditation.
Yeah, I want to get that wrapped up so that the officers all know that they're having accreditation program in place.
Absolutely, sir.
And then the landfill search was my other one, but I think you've answered that, so it looks like everybody's doing a good job. Look forward to seeing how things work out from here on, but thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next presentation, CIPP. I would imagine Roger's going to be doing that?
Yes, sir, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The capital improvement preservation plan budget is basically these preliminary proposals that are brought to you and before your final decision or discussion next week on the twenty-seventh. Just to give you a quick overview in terms of where the money is available to come from, of course, we can move general fund money over to the CIPP fund, unfortunately, there's a limited amount that's available. We also have what are called restricted pass-through dollars that come from conservation trust, and that's basically the share of the lottery money that the state takes in, they then share that with local governments. In addition, there's Adams County open space, that's a tax that is shared with the city. Those both have to be used on parks, open space, recreation and trail type of projects. For the conservation trust, we estimate three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand coming in next year, and Adams County open space, we estimate two-hundred-and-sixty thousand coming in next year. Then, we also receive from Adams County a portion of the transportation tax, that's that sales tax that was imposed, and that is for transportation improvement projects, we estimate taking in six-hundred thousand next year from that. And then we also have the solid waste tipping fee, and that is placed, that's a fee that goes on every ton of trash that is taken to the landfill that's in, within the city's boundaries. And the use of that is restricted to mitigating the impacts of the operation of that landfill. And so we've typically used it for construction projects on roads that the trash hauling trucks use to get to the landfill. It could also be used for dealing with some of the environmental impacts, if there are any, that occur. We estimate that will be six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand next year. We've talked about this before, these three bubbles in terms of our operating budget, which in the current year is forty-nine and a half million. Capital maintenance, we were able to fund three-point-six million in 2012, but most of that was from one-time money, and we know that there's more of a need there, so that's an area where we, where we will need to focus in the future. Then we also have the new capital projects that are needed sometime over the next ten years, and that two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar number is just a round number based on the total amount of capital improvements that have to occur by the time of build-out sometime in the, in the future, whether that's forty or fifty years from now. And in that category, we funded about three-point-seven million in 2012, but again, most of that was from one-time dollars. We estimate that somewhere near ten million dollars, in that nine to ten million dollars is what we need per year for capital maintenance, that's factoring in drainage as well as, like pavement management. We've funded less than a million dollars per year in recent years, and that's due to limited funding, and we have limited dedicated funding sources, and just the four that I talked about earlier are what's available for that type of use, and one of them isn't available for actually maintenance type of projects. So we're going to need to look at multiple solutions that may involve new revenues, may move, may involve moving vulnerable funds out of the general fund, so there's a number of things we need to look at. In terms of what's being recommended to you, we can fund a number of the parks and recreation projects with those pass-through restricted revenues, and like I mentioned before, those include the Adams County open space and the lottery funds. Now, we also receive park impact fee, money to the fund, park impact fee fund, but the amount that's received depends on the number of building permits that are pulled per year, as well as that money is then restricted to use for constructing new parks and recreation type of facilities, it's not available to do maintenance. So we're estimating six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand five hundred being available from those restricted revenues, those first two. What's being recommended is the Fairfax Park renovation, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand, this would be the last appropriation, basically enabling the whole renovation to move forward this fall, and it took multiple years of appropriations and grant receipts in order to accumulate enough money to do that. Fairfax Park is a more than forty-year-old park, it used to be the only major-sized park in historic city, and most of it's a drainage area, so it has suffered as a result, and it needs to be upgraded. Recreation center enhancements, a hundred thousand dollars, that is for some of the work that we had talked about earlier when we talked about the reappropriation ordinance and decided to do it as part of the request for 2013 instead. Pioneer Park improvements, same type of thing, seventy thousand for some of the improvements there, and golf equipment replacement, seventy-five thousand, so the subtotal of that is six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, and you'll notice that that is more than the amount I said was available, and the way we're covering that is to use fund balance that's available in the lottery funds, in the conservation trust fund, and Adams County open space. No park impact fee money is being used for any of that. There are other CIP proposals. Like I mentioned before, we're funding the parks and recreation capital maintenance using the restricted pass-through money. The other maintenance items are going to have to be primarily funded from general fund. We talked earlier about drainage needing three-point-four million a year, IT requests were three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, parks and recreation, there were additional requests of a hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, and just a side note, that's for Hundred and Fourth Avenue median landscaping replacement, that was killed in the hailstorm, and as well as the recycling facilities at the recreation center. You had a report earlier about pavement management needing four million a year, and then to replace police radios, we've been doing that through the capital improvement program, and those need thirty-eight thousand per year. Here are the other restricted pass-through revenue sources that we mentioned earlier, Adams County transportation tax, six-hundred thousand, and solid waste tipping fee, six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Again, we receive road impact fee funds, but again, that has to be used for arterial road construction, also within the area where those fees were collected. So we have about one-point-two million in dedicated annual revenues, but we can't use most of those revenues for many of the projects that we have, so we're proposing six-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand from the general fund. There is also these projects that were listed when council did your planning retreat back in February. There's a number of projects that, at this point, aren't funded, but you certainly could direct us to direct funds in those, to fund some of those. Then, what is being proposed for funding is, out of the transportation tax, we can pay for the Dupont cost share, a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, and also for the first of two payments for the Hundred and Fourth Avenue Bridge over the Platte River. Our ultimate commitment would be five-hundred thousand there. And then out of the general fund, we're proposing five-hundred thousand for pavement management, thirty-eight thousand for police radios, and a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand for technology infrastructure. There are also some other potential capital projects, one of them is Ninety-Sixth Avenue, and this is from basically Buckley Road to Tower, actually, the improvements start at Nukla, they're by, oh, shoot, now I can't even think of the development, drawing a blank, sorry, I'll show you a map here in a second. And basically, Bill Clase is interested in this project because that would allow his Buffalo Highlands development to proceed. Estimated cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of five-point-four million, and what we are proposing is a loan to the Buffalo Highlands Metro District, and potential funding sources for that loan would be two accounts in the capital improvement and preservation plan fund, where money currently is residing, one is a contingency project, which was placed there in case we received federal grant money that we needed to match, and the other is a project that was kind of vaguely identified as Tower and Ninety-Sixth Avenue. This improvement would involve the intersection of Ninety-Sixth Avenue and Tower, and some of the benefits is that it allows Ninety-Sixth Avenue to finally be punched through, and it would allow then the abandonment, vacation of Buckley Road south of Ninety-Sixth Avenue. A portion of that is currently on the Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge property, and so getting rid of that would then allow that property to be whole again. In addition, it allows a property transfer to occur whereby a portion of the property that's owned by Bill Clase would be transferred to the city, and that would allow a possible land swap with Fish and Wildlife Service to actually trade some land, that's, you know, land that would be east of the existing wildlife refuge for some land that would be a budding Highway Two. So the question for council really is, is this a priority for council that you would want us to go ahead with this project? There's another reimbursement that we received, when we closed out the Prairie Gateway Project, we received about a net of one-point-eight million dollars from Cronky. There's a number of options for its use, we could leave it in the CIPP fund balance, or we could apply a portion of it to help fix the 2013 gap in the general fund, because remember, we're pulling six-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand out of general fund for CIPP. We could apply the rest, or a portion of the rest to pavement management and do more for pavement management, or we could fund a new project such as the photovoltaic solar project. That project started out as a proposal under the city's previous administration to basically place solar at these two facilities, and the proposal was to do it on a lease-purchase type of basis, but when I analyzed the lease-purchase agreement, I determined that it was much better to purchase it outright than to go into the lease-purchase agreement, I'll just leave it at that. Someone wanted to get rich off the project. So here's the details of that, this would involve putting photovoltaic solar on top of a large picnic shelter at Pioneer Park, and it also includes some associated landscaping and sidewalks, estimated cost is neighborhood of five-thirty-four. Electricity generating solar at MSC, that would be placed on a cold storage equipment facility, that facility is part of the MSC expansion plan for 2015, so this would get a slight jump on that, and it would include some concrete driveways, estimated cost one-point-three million. Now, a note on that, we may need to swap some money back and forth because these are just very, very preliminary numbers. Estimated return on combined investment, just for the solar portion, would be about six percent, and if you calculate in the capital cost for the rest of the facility is about two-point-three percent. Now, that's just as if it was interest on an investment, that's not taking into consideration repayment of principal, the repayment of principal would occur, but it lowers that interest rate. So here's a summary of those funded projects, again, Fairfax Park, Recreation Center, Pioneer Park, Golf Course, Dupont, Platte River Bridge, pavement management, police radios and technology infrastructure. Here's a summary of those potential projects, Ninety-Sixth Avenue and the two PV solar projects. And that's what's coming next. So basically, for council, number one, this is for your discussion, but if you want us to look at any other projects, we will need to know that now or relatively soon in order for us to be able to gather that information. Do you want me to just roll right into the budget wrap-up as well, or?
Let me see if there's any questions first, please.
Okay.
Does the council have any questions at this point in time for the CIPP? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Roger, on that Ninety-Sixth Avenue project, that five-point-four million dollars, is that going to provide all the costs, even extending to the light up on Ninety-Sixth and Tower?
Yes, this would be, in fact, let me pull up a map real quick here, that would extend all the way from where Ninety-Sixth currently is through to Tower Road, so it, if we could have the lights dim for a second, it builds a bridge over this creek, which is next to Buckley Road, so that is four lanes of a bridge, as well as two-lane road all the way through to Tower at this intersection.
Could you point out right now where the land swap would be with the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge?
Well, potentially, that would be in this area here, I don't know, it doesn't look like I can highlight it, but if you can see that little hash mark that's very light, it'd be in that neighborhood there, there's floodplain as well as some additional land that is being dedicated to the city once this project moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks, Roger, so that five-point-four million is just for the road, what about, that's just to get it started, so?
That's the road and the bridge, two lanes of the road and full four lanes of the bridge.
Now, is that road set to be in the future to be expanded to a four-lane, or?
Yes, sir, and that would occur, I would imagine, when the additional development occurs or when traffic counts required it.
And as far as this development, what are they looking at as far as a build-out of this Buffalo Highland Metro District? What's a, what's a potential build-out?
That I don't know, I would have to ask Mr. Clase or one of the staff members if they know that.
Would Jim, Jim, do you know what it is?
Mr. Clase is here, he probably can answer the question, total build-out of the Buffalo Highlands neighborhood, I know that his proposal to the city has been that if the road can be extended and other infrastructure can be extended to the Buffalo Highlands subdivision, he believes, he's been in contact with three separate builders that believe between the three of them, they could build and sell ninety homes per year in that subdivision.
Okay. Does that help, Mr. Douglas?
Ninety homes, so what's the total, I mean, ninety homes per year, so there has to be a build-out point.
Mr. Clase is indicating the neighborhood is zoned for a thousand units, which is both single-family and multifamily.
Four thousand units?
One thousand.
One thousand?
One thousand.
Okay, thank you on that piece. The other question I had was on these solar structures over at the park, and it says built on a, well, there's, I guess there's two of them, Pioneer Park and then MSC?
Yes, sir.
Now, what's, what's MIC?
MSC is the Municipal Service Center, so that's where Public Works has their facilities, and then Parks Maintenance is also housed there.
All right, and then as far as these two structures, what's the cost savings on this as far as down the road, I mean, what are we paying right now for, to pay for electrical, and then I'm sure, you know, solar is going to pay off at the end, but how, do you have the calculation of that as far as how this five-thirty-four is spread out and when's it going to pay back?
The estimate given to us by Douglas County is that this will save, in first year, it would be forty-one thousand five hundred per year, and then inflating from there.
Okay, forty-one thousand, is that for both or be together?
Yes, that is both of them.
Okay. Let's see, again, and as far as the tipping fee, it can only be for Ninety-Sixth and Tower area, correct?
The tipping fee can be used on any roadway that is impacted by the operation of the landfill, so the way we've interpreted that is that any, any road that the trash trucks travel to the landfill on, that we can use it for such a street improvement.
And what was the cost again at Eighty-Eighth and Highway Two for that whitetopping?
Eighty-Eighth and Highway Two?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't have a specific project for that, I have pavement...
Well, no, we just, we whitopped that area... Oh, no, we, we just, we whitetopped that area down there for the, where the railroad was.
It was actually fifty, in Vasquez, I believe.
No, the highway, Highway Two and Eighty-Eighth. I mean, I'm sorry, Highway Two and Ninety-Sixth. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That wasn't actually a whitop. That was a complete reconstruction of the intersection.
And what was the cost for that?
Millions of dollars. I don't know the number offhand.
Yeah. Six, seven million dollars. But that included, uh, the silent crossing, correct?
That, that was the total reconstruction of that intersection. Did that include the silent crossing? The?
Yes, all of that was included.
So yes, it did include that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Uh, Mr. Tinkenberg, were the proposals for solar energy, were those part of the McKinstry audit that they did?
No, McKinstry looked at that and decided that payback was too long to include in their proposal. Uh, we subsequently had them look at this and they said, yeah, you know, if you want to make that investment, that's great. They're not interested in including it in theirs because the only reason we were able to do solar on this building is because it got blended in with a lot of other stuff. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been interested in it because the payback is too long for them.
Okay, thank you. Um, and regarding Ninety-Sixth Avenue, would, uh, that road and any improvements that need to be made, would that qualify for the solid waste tipping fund?
Uh, it, a portion of it, we certainly could use that money. Uh, that, that has some potential, yes.
Okay. Um, the, the actual amount though, to construct, you're estimating a five point four million?
Well, let me explain that. Um, Mr. Clace's engineer has a lower estimate. Our engineers have a higher estimate. Uh, so, you know, finance director looks at both of them and says, you know, we don't have to spend money on that, I don't think. That's my best estimate of what it'll be. That'll be somewhere between the two. But again, it, you know, once we get final engineering plans, I, I think that number, you know, it's going to be much sharper, but we don't know where it'll be exactly.
Has the design been done on that yet?
Preliminary design is done, yes.
Okay. Uh, every year, since I've been on this council, we've talked about, uh, moving those vulnerable revenues out of the general fund. Um, those are, those are things that potentially are on the chopping block each year, right?
With the state, yes.
For the legislature, depending on, on what they decide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, that's all. Oh, actually, one more question. Uh, what, what's our current amount in our fund balance?
Which one? In the general fund?
General fund balance.
Uh, general fund fund balance is approximately five, uh, just wrote it up today, but I don't have it in front of me. I think it's about five and a half million dollars. That's readily available.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, why don't you go ahead and continue? Oh, Steve?
Sorry.
No problem.
As far as that project, um, that five point three million, um, now as far as the payback on that, how's that be, would be paid back, the eight point, the five point four million? Because that's calculated out to like eleven years, fifty-four hundred dollars per property if ninety properties per year. That's eleven years. So, um, is there going to be any interest on that? I mean, what would the total be?
The, the propos- there's not a, an agreement in place yet, a loan agreement. That, that needs to be wrapped up and finalized. But the initial preliminary agreement that we have is that the Buffalo Highlands, uh, Metro District would repay the loan at six percent interest and that it's, uh, going to be obviously based on the amount of development. So that's the risk that we're facing is that development would occur slower than, than what the builders are telling Mr. Clace. Um, but the other factor that is not in that number is that as those permits are pulled, there is road impact fee and we've agreed on preliminary basis, subject to council approval, that we would apply those road impact fees to that loan. So that would reduce that loan amount, but again, the amount that it would be reduced would depend on the number of permits that are pulled. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Moreno?
Uh, Mr. Tinkenberg, just on the, the concept you, you brought up about the land swap with, uh, Rocky Mountain Arsenal, uh, is it that we would acquire the land along Ninety-Sixth Avenue and then we would swap that land with them for land along Highway Two? Was that the?
Yes, in, see, when, when the Buffalo Highlands project moves forward, that development, then there's a certain amount of land that is dedicated to the city and number of years back, Fish and Wildlife was interested in that land. So the potential is there to do that swap and we had some preliminary discussions and then of course the, the housing market dropped, bottom dropped out of it. And so all of that was put on hold for a number of years now. So that potential still exists and it would then allow us to have some developable land, say at Quebec and Highway Two.
Okay, so, uh, just so I make sure I got this straight, Arsenal is interested in the land along Ninety-Sixth and we're interested in land along Highway Two?
That's what we've had discussions with them about, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Attorney, you have something?
I just wanted to clarify something, Roger. So when, uh, build-out takes place in Met- in Buffalo Highlands Metro District, uh, we're talking about building residents?
Yes, that's the proposal, the thousand units of residential construction. And so the Metro District would impose a tax like Metro Districts are allowed to do and then the tax revenues would be what would be the primary revenue source to repay that loan.
Okay, and we're not taking into account any sales and use tax that would be generated to the general fund as a result of construction of residential houses on that site?
That is correct. That would be over and above, separate from this agreement.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Douglas, you have something else?
Yeah. Um, Roger is, is, um, in these, in these summaries, these potential projects, could we add in there to see what it would cost, um, to put a, a light over at the high school, Prairie View High School?
A traffic signal?
A traffic signal.
Okay. Um, we certainly can investigate that. I don't know off the top of my head what that would involve. That typically, you know, if you're looking, well, let me ask this, at the high school, we're, at, uh- Which intersection, I guess I should ask?
Well, you know, um, there's two, there's, there's only ride-in and ride-out on one area of the high school and then there's a stop sign on one area. And I'm wondering if, if we could do something there because they've, the freshman class there this year is huge. Um, I had a lot of parents complaining about, uh, it was backed up to, a hundred twenty was backed all the way up to the bridge this morning.
Is that all, is that all, is that all our jurisdiction or is part of that Brighton?
There have been discussions in the past between Commerce City, Brighton and the school district about how to improve that intersection when there's sufficient traffic to warrant a signal. What we can do is review that information and perhaps provide it to you next week.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we, Mr. City Manager?
Just a, a final note on the CIPP budget presentation tonight. Obviously, the information's just presented for you to consider. These will be items that we'll bring back for your discussion next Monday.
Okay. Go ahead and continue with the presentation. Then the only thing left, sir, is basically the wrap-up. Um, what we have is basically what's going to be in the budget book as in past years. The only difference is there's not going to be a hard book this year. It'll be distributed electronically. So you'll have it on your iPads. Um, though, that will include all of the presentations that I have made at the various meetings dating back to July. It'll also include all of the department director presentations that you heard at the last two meetings plus this, tonight's meeting. And then, uh, there was a question about how internal service fund allocations work, so I'll include an explanation of that and show the flow of that money. And then of course you'll have your legislative budget detail to discuss. Uh, and then there was some comment about quality community foundation, so we can discuss that and as well as the CIPP projects. One area where, where we needed clarification was regarding the golf structure. Uh, there was some discussion of holding that discussion later this fall and then there was also some discussion of potentially doing it next meeting at the twenty-seventh. So we just need clarification whether you want to talk about it next week or do that at a study session later, as well as options then for closing the general fund gap and the GID budget. So really the golf structure is the question mark that we need direction on tonight, as well as what other items haven't we included that you want us to include? Mr. Moreno, you have something?
Regarding the golf structure decision, if my memory serves me correctly, it's something that, uh, the majority of council members actually preferred for that not to be included as part of this budget and for that to be a completely separate item so we could actually give it the proper study that, that an issue that large deserves. But it's up to council.
Mr. Bullock?
I was going to repeat the same thing that Mr. Moreno, uh, just said, that we would use that as a study session item because it was going to require more detailed, um, looking into by the council and it would have spent a lot of time at the budget and we still probably wouldn't have come to any resolution.
Okay, uh, if the council's okay, if anybody else has any, any differences with that, I'm the one who really brought that up to, to light. We've got to get it fixed. I don't mind doing it after we get the budget settled and we fix it going into next year. I just, my biggest concern is we don't let it continue and next year at budget time, we have the same thing on our screen saying, what are we going to do with the golf course? We've got to figure out a way for that thing to be able to operate and not always come back as a loser and, and all of us having to try to come up with a way to fund it. So as long as we can get that taken care of, I'm okay with holding it up. Mr. Douglas, did you have something else?
On the, on the golf course, um, just, just to have this, um, as we go in at the budget, I know we want to have it separate to speak, speak on, what would it look like if we included the golf course in the budget for next year? I mean, just, um, just an overlay just to see how that would look and then we can, you know, bring that forward in the discussion. At least if we had that sooner, then later we could really dissect it.
Well, if, um, if a majority of council would like to have that discussion at a study session this fall, that would definitely be one of the options that we would be considering, but then it wouldn't be implemented until the 2014 budget year.
Correct. And from my understanding, that's what I just asked the council and nobody said they wanted to do anything different. So, um, my guess is you take it off and we'll, we'll deal with it after the budget, unless anybody on the council has a concern with that. Give you some direction. Thank you for that. Uh, are there any other topics that you want to cover on the twenty-seventh that we don't have listed? Counsel? I think you've got it covered pretty well. So far, it looks like an extremely conservative budget. Um, in these, in these economic times, we want to be as thin as we can to show the residents that we're, we're doing our part. So going into it, I know we'll be looking at wherever we can save a few extra dollars. We want to save the money. Anyone on council have anything different? Mr. Douglas?
If we did want to add something on that we couldn't think about tonight, um, do we have a couple more days to send that to you?
Well, we'll need to have a little bit of time to prepare and then of course we need to pull the whole packet together for council so it gets out to you. So, um, time is running out, so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Couple more days. Okay. Seeing no one else? Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, sir.
Room?
Just one final note. Uh, so this will be the basis for our discussion next Monday. Uh, we'll get that budget book out and all the related materials out as quick as we can this week. Uh, the budget retreat is scheduled from three to nine PM. In prior years, essentially we've just, we've gone through the items that council needs to make final, final decisions on. And I think in the last couple of years, it hasn't quite run till nine o'clock. So it really starts at three o'clock and then a meeting will just adjourn when we've gotten through all of the, um, discussion topics so that staff knows how to prepare the final budget. But it is scheduled to start at three next Monday.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. And we'll go into our administrative council business. I do have a few items for administrative council business. Um, first, I would like to start off with a skunk and prairie dog infestation. I've, I've been receiving some calls with concerns of a skunk infestation, the fifty-four hundred block of Niagara. Um, the residents there have explained to me that a neighboring property which is abandoned at this time and, and I guess it burned down. There's some, some junk laying around, that they have already trapped twelve skunks and they continue to have a problem. They can't go outside at night because the, the smell is so bad. They said it'll cause you to throw up. It's, it's a horrible situation. I know they've contacted the city, um, to try to get some help, uh, with the skunk problem. However, skunks are a wild animal and the city does not handle, uh, wild animal issues. They've contacted the Division of Wildlife. The Division of Wildlife, uh, if you have a problem on your property, you need to take care of it by contacting a private exterminator. The property, it, it actually has to be, they actually, the problem is on a different property and they have no way to resolve the problem. So first of all, I talked with the staff about how, how we can help with taking care of the problem. And what we're going to do is, and, and what I'm, what I'm going to, what we have the ability to do is to go over and look at the properties in the area that are, are providing a habitat for these kind of animals that are causing a nuisance in the area, um, to make sure that the property owners can take care of that. Uh, my biggest concern with the skunk problem, it's not just this house. After talking with the animal control officer in the area, there's a, a very large population of skunks that are causing a huge problem with a lot of the residences in that area. I was initially going to go over and, um, personally, not as the mayor, but on my own time, try to help them with trapping and taking care of some of these skunks that are causing the problem. However, the animal control officer explained to me that if I did that, that he would worry that I would set a precedent and all the other neighbors would want me to be working on their skunk problem too. And I have enough on my plate that I don't need to be dealing with skunks. So with that said, uh, because it has become a broader issue, I would like, number one, to have the staff contact Tri-County Health Department because of my fear that number one, uh, the number one thing that, that is prevalent in skunks is parvo and rabies. And the last thing I want is after we've had a complaint that there's a, a infestation of skunks in an area, that we end up with some small kid, uh, that, that has rabies or, or we end up with all the animals in the area dying because there's a parvo outbreak. So I want to know from a health and safety standpoint, um, what we can get help from with, with Tri-County. I also think that it's imperative that if, if there is that kind of a problem and it's a health and safety issue, that we have our code enforcement be able to, to move forward in a, in a more timely fashion to get the properties cleaned up and get the skunks out of the area so that it doesn't continue to become a problem. I also think that it's important when we have, uh, a situation like this, that after Tri-County looks it over and determines what the health and safety risks are because of this infestation, that the city, uh, proactively put out some information that will help the residents to be able to protect their properties from encouraging skunks to live on their property and to understand the safety role to, you know, if you're outside moving, moving a board, some lumber, whatever, there could be a skunk. You need to be aware to stay away from it. Don't get bit. All those kinds of things from a health and safety standpoint. Keep your pets, uh, away from where, where these animals may be able to go. Try to, try to keep your fences repaired so they can't get into where your animals are. But I just think we need to take- But I just think we need to take a proactive approach before we have a health issue that is tied to these complaints, that we currently don't have a way to deal with them. And that leads right into my next issue, which is a prairie dog infestation. And the animal control officer told me, and when talking to him about the skunks, he said there's a bigger problem, and it's with prairie dogs that are getting into residents' backyards and destroying their landscaping and causing a problem there. I've noticed that the prairie dog population along Highway 2, along 104th, along the old high school site, along 69th and Highway 85, around Fairfax Park, has exploded. And my concern there is a health and safety issue, because the natural way for prairie dog colonies to be controlled is through the bubonic plague, which is transported by a flea. Last year was Westminster and Broomfield had to put up some areas under quarantine because they had the bubonic plague. The fleas were in the colonies, and recently, we haven't had an outbreak of a bubonic plague. Usually happens out on the refuge and takes care of a lot of the prairie dog population. I know over the last two years, prairie dogs on the refuge have taken over an additional 5,000 acres, which is a lot of land for the prairie dogs to continue to take over. And anybody that drives down Highway 2 can tell by the amount of prairie dogs that are on the road, run over, and can tell by the amount of prairie dogs that are running around up and down neighboring streets that there is a problem. I know that our codes don't allow for us to deal with it, again, because it's a wild animal. However, because of the health risks, I would like to have Tri-County Health, to have our staff contact them and find out what the health risks are, and the areas where there are prairie dog colonies that are prevalent, to be able to send out information to our residents that will help make them more aware of the prairie dog issue, how to be able to protect their properties in the best way possible, and make them aware that they shouldn't be letting their kids go around the prairie dog holes where there may be fleas, or picking up dead prairie dogs. All those precautionary procedures, so that the city's taking a proactive approach to these potential health and safety risks to our community with these infestations from these certain rodents. And I think the last thing that I want is to hear that there's a small child in the hospital because he has bubonic plague, because it came from the masses of prairie dogs that are along these developments. We require development to put in landscaping, and I noticed I was going along Highway 2, in between 104th and 112th, along Turnberry, and we require these improvements to be put into place. They have a year warranty, so the city can make sure that the area is landscaped properly. However, it's totally taken over by prairie dogs and destroyed. And we have to have some type of a program. The arsenal, the refuge is a great place for those prairie dogs, but I would like our staff to talk to Thornton, to talk to Firestone, some of these other cities that have had these type of problems, because the business at 69th Avenue and Highway 85 has contacted me. They put in the new truck sales business a while back. The lady called and said they were required to put in trees and shrubs for their landscaping requirements. She said in one day, the prairie dogs that were coming off of the state property there to the south had totally destroyed all the landscaping. So the city, of course, goes back and says, "Well, you have to replace it." Well, their problem is, okay, we'll replace it, but what are you going to do about your prairie dogs? I explained they're not our prairie dogs. She wrote a letter, which the city has, and we need to put together a letter to send it on to the state, that we need to make sure that these areas, that these colonies are growing so large, if we have that outbreak in bubonic plague with the fleas, I'm worried about what happens with neighboring, the people first, and then their pets. So I want to make sure we take a proactive approach to engage our residents and let them know what to do with prairie dogs in the area and how to protect themselves from wild animals, because it's a wild animal, and Commerce City currently does not have any policies or codes that address wild animals. And I think I got it all out on skunks and prairie dogs right now. And I know our staff has been in touch with the people with the skunk problems, but I would like to ask the attorney if there's anything we could do to speed up remedy, if the Tri-County Health Department determines that there is a health risk, and get property owners that are creating a habitat to take precautions on getting those animals off their property because of the nuisance it's causing.
First of all, Mayor, I think you have very adequately covered the situation that the city needs to be concerned about. If it's an emergency health and safety measure, of course, that is an emergency situation, and I would thoroughly expect that with coordination with the Tri-County Health Department, we should be able to get some results, and staff will be looking into those possibilities.
Okay, I'd like to ask the council to give direction to staff to make those contacts with Tri-County Health, and to pursue the concern from the residents in both areas, so that we have some resolve going forward, that the city has taken the steps that we have the ability to take. Is the council in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with it? Mr. Benson, you have something?
I was going to move to direct the staff to do what you just said.
Go ahead. Make that motion.
I so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to direct staff to contact Tri-County Health Department to evaluate the risks to the neighbors in those areas where they have these infestations, and so that we can move forward then with a plan on how to address it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item I had, that I wanted to bring up, is the circus at the event center. And I also have the event center, so I'm going to cover both of them at one time. I continue to get complaints about the event center and the activities that take place around the event center. I understand that last night, the temporary permit that was given to one of the people that are utilizing the event center, that there was a violation that occurred, and that they were cited for having that violation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the way I also understand it is, they can only have two violations before this council has the ability to pull that license. Is that also correct?
Let me modify that slightly. An entertainment license has been issued to the two new event center operators in that building. Each event center license includes a number of conditions. The condition that the mayor's referencing is one of them. If there are two citations issued for noise violations within a 12-month period, the city staff can revoke that license. So one of the event centers did receive a violation Saturday night. So based on those conditions, if they receive a second violation anytime in the next 12 months, we will revoke that license.
Okay. With that being said, I spent Saturday driving around, looking at skunk problems. I felt that since I was out trying to take care of, looking at some concerns of the residents, I decided to stop over at the event center, and fully expecting to find some violations, I walked around the circus venue that is over at the event center. And I walked around the outside, everything seems to be clean, was fairly quiet. They had a show that was starting. I went up and addressed the owner of the operation, told him who I was, that I wanted to look around, make sure, because I'm getting noise complaints, I want to look around, make sure that everything's on the up and up, see if there was any violations. I was fully expecting to find some violations, but I will tell you, I went in, I sat down, I watched a little bit of their venue. I know it was a daytime event, but it wasn't very loud. I was able to hold a conversation inside the tent with the person that was with me. I didn't see any violation, and I was actually pretty impressed with the quality of their presentation, what they were doing with that circus. I looked at their equipment, I looked at their vehicles. I personally did not see any violations. However, I did tell the gentleman that I am receiving complaints, and I also told the gentleman that I would be back for an evening event at some future time, which will probably be this weekend, and I will go in, and I will sit down, and I will watch their event, and I will take into account the volume of their show, everything else. But when I was there Saturday around 2:00, I did not see any violations with the circus. However, I have been receiving complaints about the other entertainment licenses that are happening within the building, and I think when you combine multiple venues, then it becomes a problem. And it's something that I want to let the council know, it's something that we can't allow to continue to impact the residents of that neighborhood, but we also have to make sure that those violations are true violations. And from my understanding, this violation that occurred last night was very valid, and if there's another one, I will be the first one to ask this council to remove that license. And I know some of the residents are sitting here in the audience tonight, and they just heard me say that. I will push for removal of that license if there's another violation. And I do have a meeting scheduled next week with the owner of the property, Mr. Duffy, and I will talk to him about my concerns with the complaints that I continue to receive. However, I want to make it very well-known that the circus venue was clean, very acceptable, and I saw no violations while I was there. So that covers the circus and the event center. And then I'll go into my reports if there are no, I'll ask you first. Mr. Brian McBrue? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. We did distribute a letter this evening from the Commerce City Historical Society. The Historical Society is looking for city council to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for their grant application. So if council doesn't have any objection, administrative council business would be the appropriate time for council to grant the mayor that authorization.
Okay, is there someone who wants to make a motion for me to sign the letter, if you're in agreement with it? Mr. Moreno?
Move to allow the mayor to sign the letter in support of the Historical Society grant funding request.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Bullock, do you have something?
I'm going to reclusive myself from this vote.
Okay. Do I need a motion to allow him to abstain, or no? Mr. Attorney? Just move forward.
It's appropriate, although, yes, you need a motion to do that, but I see no reason that you'd have to abstain unless you just feel more appropriately, more appropriate to do so.
I would feel that it would be in the best interest of myself and the council if I do abstain.
All right, then, certainly because of his relationship with Deborah Bullock, who is actively involved with the Historical Society, it would be appropriate to approve a motion allowing the abstention.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor currently. I need to take an additional motion to allow the abstention. The other motion and second remain on the floor. Is there a motion maker that would like to make the motion to allow Mr. Bullock to reclusive himself from voting on the letter, the approval? Well, that's what I was just asking, and he said he has to have a motion, that's why I asked. Mr. Moreno?
I'll amend the motion to allow Mr. Bullock to abstain.
Okay. Mr. Teeter? I have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Bullock to abstain from voting on the authorization to allow the mayor to sign the letter for the Historical Society. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. I have a motion and a second on the floor to allow me to sign the letter for the Historical Society. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. The letter will get signed and sent off. Is there any other council administrative business before I move on? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Thank you. Now, is, you know, I know next week, we're talking about in study session about our budget, and is there any way that we could see that would, I mean, I was just thinking about this now, how about if we could add another board to our commissions, the would-be Historical Preservation Board? Something we could look at?
Right.
That certainly would be an appropriate discussion for the retreat next week. However, if there's some consensus from council that you'd like to move in that direction, allows us to get a head start and do a little bit of research on what we think the budgetary needs might be for that, for next year. Mr. Hayes is also reminding me that there is a study session planned for next month to talk about, or to get some direction from the city council about things to include as part of the strategic planning effort for the Historical Society. But if there's a desire to include funds to make that a city board or commission in the 2013 budget, next week would be the appropriate time to make that decision.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say I agree with Mr. Douglas, that we probably need a board that is made up of some folks that can cover the city's end of what we need to be doing from a historical standpoint with the Preservation Board. What do those boards normally cost a city? And because I know, after we approve this budget, that there's still an opportunity for the city council to determine that we need a board, and we can add that. So what my concerns are, I don't think that adding a board for historical preservation is going to be of any type of a major cost. And I think that I would like to learn more about what Jim has to offer us from the study session about that planning effort. So I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse and plan, and approve money for the board before we have the study session. However, I want to be able to put in, I want to be able to put the board together after we have the planning session, so that we know how to go about it and what their roles are going to be. So with that said, is it going to be a cost that we need to determine it now, so you can put it into the budget? What does a normal board run for that kind of a board? I don't know what those expenditures would be.
To be honest, Mayor, I'm not sure either. We can do a little bit of checking this week and bring some information back next week. I know that we are proposing in the legislative budget for 2013, a reestablishment of the Youth Commission, and for that, we budgeted $10,000.
Right, but you're talking about travel and all kinds of things when you talk about the Youth Commission. With this, this is a local board that will just come and meet, more like the QCI type of a board, and I can't see there being a big expenditure to add a board of that nature.
I think you're right. We'll double-check. If we think there's any cost that isn't coming to mind right now, we'll bring that forward next Monday.
Next week? When we have, yeah, I would have you bring that forward next week when we have our retreat. However, I don't want to sit here tonight and say, "Yeah, let's do the board," because I'd rather have the study session and be able to put it together at that point, even though I am very supportive of putting a board together. I think the timing is just off a little bit.
And you're also correct. Should the council decide after the budget's approved that you would like to dedicate some resources next year, there's a process to follow to be able to do that.
But we could start the board immediately, and I wanted Mr. Douglas to know that, that even if we don't appropriate any funds right now for that kind of board, we can start it. When we put the board together, we can go ahead and start getting the applications for residents to serve on that board. Any other?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
A couple more things. The other thing is, there's a lot of foot traffic down to the, you know, King Supers, and even the little shopping center down there. There's a sidewalk on Idalia on the west side, just north of Stewart Middle School, and the kids walk down that way. What would it take to put a sidewalk crossing? I know there's an intersection there at the veterinarian in the little strip mall, but one, just when the sidewalk starts on the west side, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there's a sidewalk on the east side, where the sidewalk starts on the west side, past the field, if there could be a crosswalk there, instead of having to go all the way down to 104th, or Tower, I mean, 104th, sorry.
We can absolutely take a look at that. We can absolutely take a look at that and bring some information back in, in a future city manager report.
Okay, thank you.
And then I forgot to mention Prairie View Middle School when I was talking about the high school too, cuz all that traffic ties into the same, same, uh, type of thing. And then, you know, based on our, based on discussion that I brought up last week about our city, um, you know, I was asking questions about our structure and everything. Would it be inappropriate for me to ask, um, this council if we had an organizational audit to make sure that our city framework for, for our city is the right size? Maybe we need to add or subtract or so, just to make sure going forward since, um, Brian has taken over and the old structure was based on the past management. Uh, I know that we were not filling certain positions, um, compositions aren't being filled, but just, just in a matter of going forward to make sure we have a financial sustainable, um, framework.
Mr. Bullock, you have something to add?
Uh, I would think that would be a good idea, but I don't think at the present time because we're about to enter the audit and we have two positions that are open that are out for bid right now. And so I would think that after we have solidified all the positions that are filled, the organizational audit would be a, probably it'd be a better time for it then than right now because it isn't gonna be a true organizational audit right now, it's just gonna be incomplete. So why don't we wait until we've, uh, actually have a budget that is going to go forth for 2013 and have all of our positions that are absolutely, that aren't filled, filled up? And then we have a true picture of what we're looking at instead of just a snapshot of, uh, something that might change in the next two or three months.
Mr. Attorney, you had something to add?
Well, the only point I wanted to make is that when it comes to personnel, how the city functions under the city manager, that's what you delegate responsibility to the city manager for to decide how his departments are set up. Now, the city council has the purse strings, and then you decide how the budget can handle the organization that the city manager sets up. But if we're talking about an organization audit as to dictate to the city manager how he should organize, now that's one thing that really is not the city council's area of, of responsibility. If we're talking about an organization that you're deciding how you're gonna fund things, then that's a different matter and that's certainly within the realm of, of the city council. But it seems like since you're talking about the budget, that's the time to talk about, well, how much money you're spending on this department, on this department, and so forth. But it's not the time to decide, are you supposed to have three commanders in the police department or two deputy city managers or something like that? Cuz that's the city manager's responsibility.
I understand that, and, and it's, I understand where Mr. Douglas is coming from too. Do we have enough police officers? Do we have too many code enforcement officers? Do we have enough administrative secretaries? Do we not have enough street department employees? And, you know, I think, I think that understanding what, at least that's what I believe you're asking for, Mr. Douglas. I don't disagree from, from the standpoint that we need to make sure we have enough officers. We need to make sure we don't have too many auditors, what, whatever that scenario may be. But I know also that every city is unique and, and I think that it would, it would help maybe not to have, uh, uh, and I don't even know who would do some kind of an audit like that, but I would like to know where we stand metrowide with the amount of officers versus our, our citizens, with the amount of, of code enforcement officers, what have you, so that we can have some ideas. I know there's several new people on this council, and I think that it would really help all of us to see what's happening with this downturn in the economy, making sure that our residents have enough protection, but that we're not, um, weighted too heavily in other departments. So if I'm understanding what Mr. Douglas is asking, I also support what he's asking for, but I think it probably needs to be done more in a research of all the metro area cities and what they have based on per resident type of, of, of employment. Does that cover it, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I mean, this goes from the, because of, um, how things were, were done here, I mean, we, we had, you know, Jerry here and how he structured things. And, and I understand what you're saying, Bob, um, but as far as council given direction, I would like to see, to make sure that our, the organization from top to bottom is aligned with what the size of our city. And I don't think that's too much to ask for and...
So that helps you decide from a budgetary point of view what you can fund.
Right, it wouldn't help, it wouldn't help this year because we don't know what we have too heavy, too, too, too light or too heavy in certain areas, but what I would say is that I would want to do it in conjunction with the city manager so that we all can understand, and you know what? Commerce City may have some unique areas where we need to have more in one department for, maybe we have more park space and we need to have a little more in our, in our parks department. Maybe we need to have a little less in another department that will fluctuate, that will different, differ from the metro area. But I think it will give an idea and it will help the council to work with the city manager to make sure organi- organizationally we have the right amount of employees in the right departments to be able to operate the city on the right amount of money without spending too much or too little, so that we can make sure our residents are protected and the services are provided. Mr. Manager?
A couple of comments come to mind initially. One is, um, we are constantly evaluating the size of the organization and where resources are, are needed most. A comment I've made before is that your staff, we are resources at your disposal to implement city council's vision. So the number of staff we need in different departments within the city really depends on what the city council's trying to accomplish. And here's, here's a very tangible example. Uh, the city currently has, I believe, seven neighborhood services inspectors. One position is vacant, so we've got budgeted eight neighborhood services inspectors. Adams County, I believe, only has three or four code enforcement officers for the entire county. Well, what's the right number of inspectors? It depends on how much code enforcement the community is looking to achieve. If Adams County has three or four inspectors for the entire county, they've made a decision about the level of enforcement they're seeking in the county. Commerce City, on the other hand, has more inspectors, uh, based on what we believe the level enforcement city council is seeking. So that's, that's one example. Uh, but that, that assessment occurs constantly. As part of the budget presentations, you've heard of, uh, reductions that we're making in certain parts of the organization, which then makes resources available to shift to other parts of the organization. Uh, doing it organization-wide would definitely have value, but it would take some time and it would also require the city council's input about what level of services are you seeking.
And you know, we hear it from a day-to-day basis, Brian, and, and I will just, I will just let you know that, that we get residents that say, hey, why do you got so many people in this department or that department? But when I was talking to the animal enforcement officer, the animal control officer the other day, um, I was asking him about, you know, the prairie dog stuff, the skunks, all that kinda stuff. And he said, he said, you know, Mayor, we're, in our department, we're spread pretty thin. There's only two of us and we've got a lot of, a lot of stuff to take care of in the short amount of time that the two of us can handle. And, you know, that's, you hear it from the other side too. We're spread real thin, we're, we've got a lot on our plate. I wanna make sure we continue to provide the best service we can. In this economy, I would also say exactly what, what I would say to any employee. You know what, we need to do a little more with less right now so that we can get hold on, on our financial side so that we can provide the resources necessary. So you don't wanna add that next guy when he only, when there's only enough work for half of him to do. You wanna, you know, so there's, there's that period of time. But I hear it on both sides. You're the city manager, we know the charter says that you take care of personnel issues, and I respect that. So whatever comes forward and, and in the, being able to help us to understand what's going on metrowide, when you get those resources, we would like to see them so that we can work together with you to build the best city that we can. And that's, that's the direction I would like to go. Okay? I do have one more item on administrative council business, and I'm glad that I remembered to bring it up. I did receive an email from Nan, Nan Ning, Naming, China. The mayor would like us to send our contingency to China this year. And, um, I will be giving the email to staff and I will be respectively declining the opportunity. When we have these kinda economy and, and, and everybody else is trying to do a little more with less, I don't think that it is, uh, a wise decision for, for me or for this council to send, uh, contingency to China, um, to work on relationships, um, oh, abroad or, or overseas. So, so with that said, not only that, when I ran for office, I told a lot of people that I would not be going to China and I won't be going to China. So I want the residents to know, this year, I will not promote a trip to China and I definitely will not be going to China. And a letter will be going out saying that we're not participating this year. If the council sees it differently, they can outvote me, but I still will decline from going. So I just wanted you to know that was out there and, and that's, that's my decision on the China trip. Now we can go into reports. Seeing no one else lit up for administrative council business, Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as has become customary, I'd like to review quickly the city manager report that was distributed to city council members prior to, um, tonight's meeting. As we've had for the last few weeks, we've got a number of updates on follow-up items that have been directed to us by council. Uh, let me see here. Uh, first off, Mayor Ford and Mayor Protem Moreno had asked, uh, city staff to take a look at property maintenance at the dog track. Uh, we have done that, we've sent city crews over to remove trash, debris, and brush, as well as give the weeds a cut around the perimeter of the property, we did that last week. Uh, Mayor Ford had asked us to, uh, look at pavement conditions in the outlook subdivision. Attached to the city manager's report is a more detailed memorandum from the public works department. It goes into a little bit more detail about pavement conditions and, uh, what we think the estimate, estimated costs are to, to make the necessary, uh, fixes in that neighborhood. It appears that most of the problems have been caused where, um, utilities cross the street. The ground is settled around those areas. Uh, but again, uh, we would refer you to the more detailed memo that's attached to the city manager's report. Uh, Councilman Bullock had asked us to, uh, check on the status of the quiet zone improvements at Ninety-Sixth Avenue and Highway Two. We've included some information in the report. Uh, we're, we're still looking for those improvements to be finalized. It looks, uh, based on public works review, that what we're waiting on now is power to be provided by Excel. And then there's a, a twenty-one day notice period where they test out the quiet zone. Uh, next update, city council, um, had asked us to, uh, work with June Younger and the Historical Society on the letter of support for the grant, you approved that earlier. Mayor Ford had asked us to add an additional foursome to the CC BPA golf tournament, which is this Friday. We have done that, we are still looking to, to fill out those extra spots. Uh, Mayor Protem Moreno had asked for some additional information. Uh, take a look at the information, Mayor Protem Moreno, and if it's not quite what you were looking for, uh, please let us know. We've provided an analysis of, of benefits and how they are provided with respect to full-time employees and part-time folks. Um, we've provided an update on the pavement, uh, pavement work that we're doing on Seventy-Second Avenue. Um, next item, uh, as Mayor Ford mentioned, uh, we've been working with neighbors adjacent to the Mile High Event Center. We've got a more detailed update in the report that includes some of the key conditions that we've attached to the entertainment licenses that we've issued recently. As we mentioned earlier, one of those conditions that, that there, is that there not be more than two noise violations within a twelve-month period. Uh, one of the event, the event centers did receive a summons Saturday night. Uh, Mayor Protem Moreno had asked that we, uh, publicize that the medical waste facility proposed in Adams County will not be proceeding. However, when we contacted Adams County, Adams County indicated the application is not and officially withdrawn. So although the, the county staff does not believe the project will be proceeding, uh, from a technical standpoint, the application and the approval, uh, is still, uh, is still on the books, so to speak. They've not asked to officially, uh, um, withdraw. Um, the city council had asked for, uh, asked us for an updated list of projects for pavement management. Uh, there's some supporting material attached to the city manager's, city manager's report tonight that has a prioritized list of pavement management projects. Uh, Mayor Ford had asked, uh, to see the list of items that did not make it into the recommended city manager's budget. There were a number of items requested by the departments that, that I'm not recommending, and you can see the entire list attached. Uh, Mr. Gaylor made reference, uh, earlier tonight to some legal opinions that have been shared with city council, those were sent out via confidential email. Uh, Councilman Douglas had asked for more information about a pay-as-you-throw program. We have that on our list and we'll make sure that's part of the discussion when city council takes up the bid for trash collection next year. Uh, we'd mentioned previously that the current contract with waste, waste management was an initial five-year term which ends the end of 2013. There are renewals that are allowed as part of that contract, but the city council will have the option of going out to bid as well. Uh, the Stephanie Salazar trial began today. We wanted to let council know that several staff members will be out this week, uh, involved in that trial, so, uh, we may be a little bit shorthanded depending on the services that you're looking for. Uh, and then, uh, Councilman Douglas had asked for some details about the city's data storage capabilities. Uh, I hope Mr. Douglas can understand that, I don't understand that. Uh, so if you have questions about that, please contact John Howard. And, uh, boy, that, that is it. So as always, please, uh, contact us if you have questions.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
The only thing I have, uh, in addition to what we've already covered this evening is to, uh, let you know that I, I fully hope and expect that I'll be present for the retreat on, uh, Twenty-seventh. However, I am under subpoena on a Salazar case and I'm on call. So it just depends on when I'm called. And if I have to testify on the Twenty-seventh, obviously I won't be able to be present at the, at the retreat, at least at the beginning of the retreat. So we'll, we'll just see how that plays out. I'm on standby for, for testimony. Other than that, that's the only item I have.
All right, thank you. I'll go into my reports real quick. Um, I've had some meetings with developers this last week, Rotary. Uh, met with the Adams County Brighton Aurora Coalition, dealing with DIA in Aratropolis in an executive session last week. Um, I also met with the Commerce City Historical Society and the new Save-A-Lot concerning some signs in the Derby area. I had a meeting with, uh, Adams County, Commerce City, the FBI, and some other police agencies in the metro area, um, that, uh, the FBI put together. They hosted it here, thank you Chuck for, for, uh, making that all come together. Um, but it's for, to discuss a preparedness plan, not just for the Sikh temple, but potentially all, um, religious, uh, dwellings. Um, and then lastly, I, I have it down. I went to the, went to the circus event over at the event center and looked at properties for skunk issues. With, uh, is there anybody else that wants to add to those reports? Mr. Bullock, oh, you know what I didn't put on there?
I know.
Country Music Hall of Fame.
Right.
Yesterday I went to the Colorado Country Music Hall of Fame with Mr. Bullock. And, uh, it was, it was a nice event. Uh, there were, there were a lot of people there and we gave out some awards on behalf of the Country Music Hall of Fame. And I got a chance to read that proclamation that had the word ignomatic, ignomatic?
Enigmatic.
And the same one that I screwed up in this council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Still don't have it down, screwed it up again yesterday. We're gonna avoid words like ignomatic, uh, in the future for proclamations. Is there anything else, Mr. Bullock, that I missed?
No, I was just going to mention that, but, um, you did very well with that, thank you.
All right, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, last Wednesday, I... Yeah, last Wednesday, I went over to the I-70 East Environmental Impact Statement meeting they had. They meet every third Thursday of the month. And just to put that rumor, rumor to bed about the I-70 expanding to, over to, or being rerouted to 270 is not going to happen. They're, they are firm on, on, the analysis is already done in going forward, the project, so we can, now, I did, I did ask about, when they do do this, when they start in the construction, we might have that activity come our way as far as a detour. But as of right now, there's not going to be an expansion into 270.
Good. Anyone else? If there be no further business to come before the City of Commerce City, City Council this evening, we're adjourned. But please keep your seats, because we have the GID Board Meeting to take care of. I'll open the meeting for the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District. Well, do you need to call the roll again? Please call the roll.
Yes, I do. Mayor, or, excuse me, Chairman Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Moreno?
Here.
Board Member Benson?
Here.
Board Member Carson?
Present.
Board Member Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Bullock?
Here.
Board Member McAldowney?
Present.
Board Member Elliott?
Present.
Board Member Douglas?
Present.
Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please let the record show that Mr. McAldowney is absent tonight from the GID Board Meeting. Do we need a motion to excuse him from this board meeting as well, Mr. Attorney? Mr. Bullock?
A motion to excuse Board Member McAldowney from the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District Meeting of Monday, August 20th.
Mr. Douglas? Have a motion in a second to allow that, that excuse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is an ordinance on first reading. Ordinance GID 1313, which is an ordinance amending the 2012 Budget of the City of Commerce City's Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, the GID, by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District in the amount of $352,000 for the water ERU credit purchase and authorizing the expenditure thereof. What are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock?
I would like to make a motion to approve Ordinance GID 1313, and I would like to ask the City Attorney to give a brief explanation of, this is something we do every year, of why we do this.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Moreno?
Second motion.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Attorney, would you give a brief overview, please?
Yes, this is an ongoing program of the City of Commerce City to purchase water for use by the City of Commerce City, mainly for use on our parks and on our medians. And this program allows the city to, on a regular basis, to acquire available water that would be, enable the city then to acquire the, the usage through the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. So this appropriation would allow that program to continue.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I have a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance GID 1313. I'll ask for a roll call vote. City Attorney, read the title?
Title reads, Ordinance GID 1313. An Ordinance Amending the 2012 Budget of the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, the GID, by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District in the amount of $352,000 for the water ERU credit purchase and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
The vote is eight aye.
Okay.
One, or, excuse, eight aye, one excused.
Thank you. Let the record show that. If there be no further business, yes, sir? Board Director Bullock?
Yes, I just forgot I mentioned it last week, and I just wanted to remind the council that this Sunday is the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Fun Day on the Greenway, and they're going to have a lot of different things. We're going to start off with a morning bike ride at 8:30 starting in Commerce City, music from the Too Late Bluegrass Band, and we're going to have our first annual Sand Creek Ducky Derby, where you can adopt a ducky. And if you win, there are all sorts of great prizes that you can win, all the way up to a family membership to the Wings Over the Rocky Air and Space Museum. So that's this Sunday out on the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Trail. If you want to look it up, just go to sandcreekregionalgreenway.org on your website.
Okay, with that said, if there's nothing further to come before the General Improvement District Board of Directors this evening, we are adjourned.